PUD districts that would allow any use that's allowed in any of the conventional zoning districts, but those would be spelt out in a development agreement. The PUD would help shape and achieve the goals of our special districts like the Ellis Overlay, Nuvo District, the Czech Village, and our historic districts. We really want to see incorporation of pedestrian accessibility. As I mentioned, we would be encouraging higher levels of design, more density, open space, less parking, other design features. And also, the PUD, as it does now, is used to protect environments, sensitive areas. As the mayor indicated in introducing this public hearing, we're looking at a PUD 1 district, which is a master, is a district for large sites that would be master planned and developed in multiple phases. And then a PUD 2 district, which would be mixed-use districts hopefully as well, that would be developed in single phases for smaller sites and would be especially beneficial in infill situations where there's more complexity in developing those sites. Again, these are the two districts that we're proposing, the PUD 1, the PUD 2, and then just kind of the steps in the process that they would have to take. For a master-planned PUD, they would have to come in, they would be required to do a concept plan review before they submitted for the district. In the PUD 2, we would certainly strongly encourage that, but once the master plan is approved, you would be able to go into preliminary site plan approval for each phase of the development, which could be combined with the administrative site plan, which is really the civil engineer plan that fulfills the site plan requirement for building permits. The PUD 2 is a little more streamlined. You'd go right to a preliminary site plan with the rezoning application and then go into the administrative site plan. And if they really had their ducks in a row, those could be combined to really expedite that process. This is just another high-level view of how that process works, the different steps. And these are the requirements I will go through and for the, you know, the different applications for the PUD 1, the master plan. This is the PUD site plan requirements for the preliminary site plan, which is somewhat like what we require now, that would require additional information on what those uses would be, what the modifications or bonuses they're asking for in exchange for what is their higher level of design, what type of standards are they really going over and follow on. And then here's some of the potential enhancements in exchange for some of the modifications they could get. We certainly would be looking for more recreational open space, either dedication or reservation, maintenance agreements for those areas, amenities, playgrounds, community centers, those types of things. Obviously, compact pedestrian-oriented development with mixed use, buildings closer to the street, they'd get bonuses for that, with parking in the rear and to the side, obviously going over and above our typical store water management design, maybe shared parking agreements, structured parking, LEED certification or energy efficiency construction based on maybe the Iowa green building criteria. Again, parking lots in the rear. And then some of the bonuses would be density bonuses, they'd give them more density if they provide a higher level of design. They would get very, could get variances on setbacks, lot width and size, potentially roadway right-of-ways, parking, and building height. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I know there are a number of people here, or several people here, that wanted to speak during the public hearing, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vern.
You're welcome.
Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone from the audience like to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel.
Your Honor, Dick Ranson with Holland Hall Engineers. I'm here tonight as chair of the Developers Council. We had an opportunity to work with Vern on helping to develop this. A small committee, Tred Snore and Jim Sattler, also assisted with that. This is something that personally I've been pushing Vern for, for quite some time. Within it's a win-win, the city gets a higher level of development through the use of this process, in exchange, the development community gets more flexibility in terms of how it can use this ordinance to provide for larger site development, provide for more flexibility, those kinds of things in this. So we see this as a win-win and really encourage its adoption. Vern and I had a conversation last week. We know that in a year or so, we'll have to back and look and see how this is actually operating. To think that we got it right and perfect the first time was, we're probably kidding ourselves, but we really encourage the adoption of this ordinance as it stands today and give us an opportunity to work with it, see how it works, but I see this as a good thing for all of us. So, thank you very much.
Would there be any other individuals that would like to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record. Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section of public hearing number two, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. Any counsel comments or considerations? Counselor McCard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Mr. Ranson for answering many of my questions that I had for Vern. Then the only other thing I want to add is, somebody assure me that this table of permitted uses makes sense. I mean, I don't understand all of the codes and is that going to be, the purpose of it is going to be to do what? The idea is, is under today's PUD, you have to specifically define the areas where you want to do like commercial or residential, and then you're stuck to those areas unless you go through another rezoning process to do that. The idea is, especially for the master plan, the big areas, is to have the developer put a lot more thought into it upfront instead of doing piecemeal development and planning out where I want my commercial, where I want my residential. And keep in mind that when we look at these applications and come in, they need to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and somewhat consistent with the area plans, so that we aren't doing something that's totally out of whack for the surrounding area. I just wanted to have assurances that we were speeding up the process. As I read the recap, you know, the assurances are all there that we're going to make it better. And then I get to those charts, and I get to thinking, somebody's got to figure, it'll take days to figure out who belongs in what chart.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel. For Counselman Carter.
I would like the citizens who've been involved, Mr. Ranson, you and the folks involved with this, to help us move this forward. This is long overdue, I agree with you. This is really important, we get this done. And I really thank you for doing this. I also want to thank Monica, Pat Shea, and Scott Olson on the Development Committee, who really have a vision about what this community should look like when we dive down the streets, and what this community should look like so we feel comfortable here. I don't want to ever see another pole building on First Avenue again in my life. You know, I just love this. So I want to thank all the citizens and the Development Committee, you're hardworking and it's, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Carter. Counselwoman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of this ordinance on its first reading.
It's been moved by Poe, seconded by Swor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the rule requiring three readings on three different days be suspended and the ordinance be adopted on its second and third reading.
It's been moved by Poe, seconded by Carr. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number three, will be held to consider amending a future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan from office to commercial and to consider a change of zone for property at northwest corner of the intersection of 76th Avenue and J Street southwest from A, which is agricultural zone district, to C3, which is regional commercial zone district, as requested by Kirkwood Community College. Vern, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Start out by mentioning that Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use map amendment and the rezoning for this site at their May 16 meeting. This overall site is 52.3 acres. Of that 52.3, 15 acres of it right now is being considered for preliminary site plan for a new Ruffalo Cody site. I'm sure you're aware of their site is on the Kirkwood campus. They've grown that facility and are building a new facility at this location, subject to approval, obviously, of City Council. The building that they're looking at putting up is over 46,000 square feet. It's a two-story building, actually, it's about 46,000 square feet for each floor. And they do show a little over 21,000 square for the future expansion area. They have a lot of parking, 698 parking spaces, they're required 387. We talked to them about that, and they said they just absolutely cannot live without any, you know, any less parking because of the overlap in their skid, their shifts. And so I wanted to just point that out. For the future expansion area, they show another 225 parking spaces. They would have two accesses on the Kirkwood Parkway and one access on the C Street. They do show a store water managing, management area, which is a retention area at the southwest corner of the site, which would actually be kind of in the middle of the overall 52 acres that would be a retention pond that would provide the bulk of the retention for the overall development. And what else will have a trail around it as they're proposing right now. Preliminary site plans would be required for the balance of the site when they came in with realistic site plans or realistic development. This is just a location map showing the property at the northwest corner of the intersection of 76th Avenue and C Street. The aerial photo, you can see it's east of the Kirkwood campus and south of the Aon and the Elbow. And then this is the overall site showing how, right now, they're proposing to divide it into three lots with the 15-acre site for Ruffalo Cody at the southwest corner of the intersection of Kirkwood Parkway and C Street. And then this is a more detailed site plan of the Ruffalo Cody site with the building outlined in red. They do have two points of access, this could end up being a shared access with the future development to the webs, another access on the 76th and then one out on the C Street. At this point, I don't have anything further to add, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vern.
You're welcome.
Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Does anyone from the audience wish to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel. Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section of public hearing number three, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. That brings us, any council comments or considerations? Counselman Shields.
Vern, normally agricultural land would be taxed less than commercial, so I'm making an assumption, I'm asking, will this bring in more property tax to the city or?
Yes, once this develops, then, I think initially they'll plant off the 15 acres, that will be taxed at a commercial rate. The balance of the site would still be taxed at an ag rate until it develops, but yes, it will bring in additional tax revenue to the city.
Thank you, Counselman Shields. Seeing no other questions, Counselman Carter.
You know, we just talked about, a few minutes ago, about curb appeal, all the other things, and saying, I look at this, there's a little building under it, all this parking lot, all out there, not in the back of the building. This is exactly what we were talking about, because I kind of labored that, because I think of all the rainwater going in this parking lot, you know, not permissible. I look at everything that's here, and it's all parking lot. And again, maybe a company wants to build something like this, needs to build a parking ramp attached to their building and have, and use less green space, but this is an example of what I think is a negative. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Carter. Any other questions, counsel? The motion by Swor, seconded by Vern. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number four, will be held to consider a change of zone for property at 2112 J Street southwest from R3, which is single-family residence zone district, and R, excuse me. Yeah, listen, go ahead, Alyssa, do you try to get my attention on something? Do you just need to buzz in, okay?
This will be the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, so it's been moved by Vern and seconded by Swor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you. Jim, did we do that, get that done right? All right, thank you. That brings us to public hearing number four, which will be held to consider a change of zone for property at 2112 J Street southwest from R3, which is single-family residence zone district, and R3D, which is two-family residence zone district, to RMF1, which is multiple-family zone district, as requested by Alan and Laura Fisher. Vern, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I'll mention that City Planning Commission didn't unanimously recommend approval of this at their May 13 meeting. This is really a property that contains two parcels. The property at 2112 J Street is developed with a duplex, and then the lot to the south, owned by the applicant as well, is zone R3D for duplex, although the lot doesn't meet the minimum density requirement to allow him to put an additional duplex on that lot. So that's why he's rezoning both lots, RMF1, because the lot with the duplex on it is also legal non-conformity, because the lot size doesn't meet that minimum density requirement. Since this is a two-family rezoning request, a site plan isn't required at this time, and they would just submit a site plan when they come in for a building permit. One thing that I would note, staff recommended, because of some concern by some of the neighbors in that these could be, these lots could be developed as, you know, a larger apartment-type complex, staff recommended that a condition be placed on it that either or both of the lots could not be developed with anything more than one or two family unit on those lots. And Planning Commission concurred with that recommendation, so that would be a condition that's in the ordinance that you would be voting on this afternoon. This is just a aerial photo showing the site, you can see it's south of 21st Avenue on the west side of J Street. And then this is the zoning map. You can see that three-quarters of the property is already zoned, R3D, so at one point in time, a council had approved this property essentially for duplex-type development. Somehow, and I think it was an error on the contractor's part or the owner's part, they built a duplex on a lot that's half R3, single-family residential, and half R3B. So at any rate, the applicant would like to, if the zoning's approved, construct another duplex south of the one that he owns and operates today. With that, I have nothing more to add, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vern.
You're welcome.
Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Does anyone from the audience wish to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel. Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section for public hearing number four, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. That brings us, any council of comments or consideration? Do I have a motion to approve? It's been moved by Swor. Counselman Shields, excuse me, do you have a question?
Vern, would you tell me one more time what the conditions were that you would ask or offer to the planning and zoning provision that they approved?
It was, it was a condition that basically said that either one of these parcels outlined in red could not have anything more than a single-family home or a duplex on it. They couldn't say tear down the duplex, combine the two lots, and put like an eight-plex apartment unit on it. You know, the neighborhood just wanted to make sure that the density wasn't out of scale and incompatible with the neighborhood, and so that was the condition that CPC recommended forward to you.
Could anyone else tear down property that's presently built on, tear it down now, and put in a large development?
Not without rezoning it.
Thank you. Thank you, Justice. It's been moved by Swor, seconded by Vern. And all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number five, will be held to consider an electric line easement agreement with ITC Midwest LLC for a property located on city-owned land at 7525 Bertram Road Southeast in connection with the water pollution control facility flood protection.
Good afternoon, counsel. Rob Davis with the Development Works Department. I'm going to, in interest of time, read a quick description for items five and six together, since they're essentially the same project. This is an easement that ITC Midwest has requested, was actually prompted by the City of Cedar Rapids. The wastewater pollution control facility has a flood protection structure levy that requires the electric line to be relocated. Without them being relocated, the facility can't be built, the flood protection facility can't be built. So item number five is on the south side of Bertram Road. It's actually for a 50-foot line easement that would serve the wastewater pollution control facility itself. And item number six is 727, 2727, on the north side, which is an irregular, irregular-shaped easement that would be for their main line on the north side of Bertram Road. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Does anyone from the audience wish to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel. Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section of public hearing number five, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. That brings us, any county, or council comments or consideration? Seeing that it's been moved by Olson, seconded by Swor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number six, will be held to consider an electric line easement agreement with ITC Midwest LLC for a property located on city-owned land at 7527 Bertram Road Southeast in connection with the water pollution control facility flood wall protection project. Counsel, we've already had the presentation on this, so this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone from the audience like to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel. Seeing none, that closes out the public comment period of public hearing number six, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. Brings us to council comments or consideration? Seeing none, it's been moved by Olson, seconded by Swor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number seven, will be held to consider continuation of disposition of excess city-owned property described as a commercial building and land located at 56, 16,000, southwest. Rob, I'll recognize you.
Counsel, this is the former Novak Heating and Air site on 16,000 of Czech Village. This is a property that was acquired with TDBG funds in 2012. In order for the city to put this out for bid, we would need to hold a public hearing first, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone from the audience like to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward and state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the counsel. Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section of public hearing number seven, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there were zero objections. Brings us, any council comments or consideration? Seeing none, it's been moved by Swor, seconded by Vern, but there is discussion, Counselwoman Carter.
I just didn't see it on here, but I think I'm maybe, I come a step after this. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, seeing no further discussion, again, it's been moved by Swor, seconded by Vern. And all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number eight, will be held to consider the disposition of excess city-owned property acquired through the voluntary property acquisition program in the neighborhood revitalization area for the third round of single-family new construction program. Caleb, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. Caleb Mason with Community Development. There are four properties that the city has acquired through the acquisition program. They're generally located on K Street Southwest. We've identified them for the third round of the single-family new construction, and subsequent to today's meeting, we'll bring back development agreements on these properties.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone from the audience like to address the counsel? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to three minutes to address the counsel.
I have a question. Is this in regards to the Roots program? Can you answer that?
Well, you can pose the question, and then counsel can ask it of the presenter.
Okay, then. Because if the question is no, I'll sit down and shut up. It is. Okay, so assuming that it's the Roots program, because you can't say yes or no, I am once again opposing the Roots program. I am again asking for a moratorium on it. The Roots program has had a negative effect for all the properties in this town in the moderate price range between 110, 120,000 to 150,000. I know that you guys have contradicted me on that. Go through the properties. All the properties in my area, in Cedar Hills, all the properties over off Wilson Avenue, out there where Frank King moved to, we have all lost value in our homes. Although the taxes go up, because the levies are going up, and they roll back and everything changes, our assessments are dropping, our values are dropping. This Roots program has to do with it, why would somebody, and usually houses sell pretty quickly out of Cedar Hills, why would somebody buy a house for $120,000 when they can go and get $160,000 with $40,000 off and get 120,000, spend $120,000 on a $160,000 house? This is in regards to the Roots program, if this is the Roots program, which I'm kind of assuming it is, but you didn't mention. Because home buyers get 25% off, 25% down payment assistance, so a $160,000 house would then be 120,000 for, $40,000 equity immediately. I'm in favor of infill, don't get me wrong, but I am against this Roots program. It has had a negative effect for all the moderate valued homes in our community, and I'd like the moratorium on this Roots program to stop, to help us increase our values of our homes and not continue to drop them. These flood victims that we, you know, we've relocated and we got up to $25,000 replacement housing assistance, we've lost that. We've lost that. Our values have dropped so bad. If we were going to try to sell our house, we would be selling it at much less than what we bought it for. So I'd like you guys, I know, I don't think that you're looking at the big picture on this issue. I did get the information from the assessor's office, I did do the math and the Excel spreadsheet and everything, and the values are lowering in the moderate income houses, which usually they increase. They are around the country, but not Cedar Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the counsel? Seeing none, that closes out the public comment period for public hearing number eight, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter, and there was one objection, there is no resolution for us to vote on this afternoon. Are there any council comments of, of Caleb or questions? Okay, seeing none, that moves us to public hearing number nine, counsel, will be held to consider amending Chapter 32 of the Municipal Code of Zoning Ordinance to make delayed deposit service uses a conditional use in C2 Community Commercial Zone District and requiring a distance separation of 1,000 feet between delayed deposit service uses and other certain protective uses.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. So based on that system, there are a couple statistics from the University of Iowa that was performing the study, and just going to share those with you. 400% is the average annual interest rate on a payday loan in Iowa. And 13.8 is the number of loans taken per year by the average Iowa payday borrower. So you can take out a loan every two weeks, which means basically, the average Iowa payday borrower is spending half a year trying to get out of the system after taking out the first payday loan. And we did count 13 active payday lenders within the city of Cedar Rapids. So based on these concerns, a neighborhood leader did approach staff last year and asked for assistance in helping to keep these types of businesses out of the city's neighborhoods. You can see here a map of the 13 locations in red with a 1,000-foot buffer around those parcels where the city currently has payday lenders, and you'll notice that they are clustered, there are some clusters around the West Dale area, on Edgewood Road, and then also around the Lindale area as well, with a few other locations. Payday lenders are licensed by the state of Iowa, and cities are not able to ban these businesses from the communities. Other states have been successful at limiting interest rate charges, or they've made payday loans legal, it's actually illegal in 13 states in the country, but that hasn't happened yet. yet in the state of Iowa. There are payday alternatives, and one example would be brilliant. They have a payday alternative loan program where they only charge 19% interest on a similar type of loan. I looked, and I think that's probably the best option in the community for a similar type of program. They don't require anything additional beyond what an existing payday lender would require. Other options would just be possibly borrowing from family or a friend if that's possible, or taking a loan against a credit card, which would actually be cheaper in interest rates, things like that. Cedar Rapids does not have any restrictions now against payday lenders, but we have noticed a trend of other Iowa cities enacting regulations against payday lenders in the past few years. Des Moines, West Des Moines, Iowa City, Haynes, and Clive are five that we've identified that have put in place very similar distance separation requirements for payday lenders. And so we've adapted that a little bit to Cedar Rapids, and staff is recommending the following: to allow a delayed deposit service use, which is the state's term for a payday lender, as a conditional use in one zoning district, that would be the C2 Community Commercial Zone District. That zoning district is less commonly seen than C3 in some of the major commercial districts and corridors of concern, such as First Avenue East, Williams Boulevard, and Edgewood Road. And that would also exclude most of, actually all of downtown and most of the core neighborhoods as well. We would also recommend requiring a distance separation of 1,000 feet between any two delayed deposit service uses payday lenders, or between a payday lender and childcare or educational facility, parks and open space use, or religious institution. The reason that these types of places are used for the distance separation is not because there's a direct link between a park and a payday lender, but because these are the types of institutions that are typical of a strong neighborhood, and so keeping payday lenders separated from these community gathering spots is one way that it makes sense to limit them in the community. We would also recommend measuring the distance separation in a straight line from the nearest point of one structure to the nearest point of the other. And finally, existing payday lenders would be grandfathered into the system as long as they stay in their current locations. Staff's prepared a map here. Here you can see in red would be any existing park, open space use, religious institution, or childcare facility or school. And so you can see the areas of town where payday lending would not be permitted. There are some places in green, it's a little bit difficult to see, but there are still potential areas where payday lenders could locate around the Collins Road, First Avenue area, possibly around the Westdale area, the very far edge of town off of Wright Brothers Boulevard, and then Blair's Ferry Road between Council Street and Rockwell. Coincidentally, there are also banks in almost all of these locations except for the very far end of town. That's the information that I have prepared for counsel.
Thank you, Thomas. Counsel, this is the time and place for a public hearing on this matter. Would anyone from the audience like to address the council? If so, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the council.
I can't pass up coming up to the state office. Oh, Lisa Cudella.
And for the public hearing, for regular public comment, you don't have to say your address, but for the public hearings, because they are official, we'd like you to state your address also. Thank you.
Northwest side of Cedar Rapids. I can't pass up saying something that I think if I'm understanding it right, this is great. I'd like to get rid of all payday lenders, so if this is regulating it more and restricting it more, this is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Again, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the council.
Thank you, mayor. Darryl Ryder, by name, I live at 3816 Lenning Road Northeast. This is an initial attempt to regulate a financial industry that is virtually unregulated. They are predatory lenders, and that's been the conclusion of recent reports by the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. It's an over 40-page report, and they indicate that further action is needed. The owners of these payday lending places are state corporations. All of the profits are taken out of state. My, indeed, these are not well-paying jobs that they present, and I've also been told that their turnout, turnover rate of their employees is approaching 100%. So aside from property taxes and rental payments, I essentially think that's all the positives that they provide to our community. So I urge you to support this proposal.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Again, just come forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the public record, and you have up to five minutes to address the council.
I'm Ellen Fisher, 712 Nolan Street, Southeast Cedar Rapids. I would support this ordinance. I'm a volunteer with the Family Promise Program, which is helping to provide, working to provide table housing for homeless families in our community. I think that anything that is predatory and likely to reduce people's credit ratings is, if I'm being honest, for people getting into table housing. So I would strongly encourage any kind of regulation that we can put on that would disperse to a lower density of payday lending. If we had a way of eliminating it, that would be even better.
Thank you, Ellen. Would anyone else like to address the council? Robin?
Mayor, Council, Robin Cash, 1806 Grand Avenue, Southeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I'm speaking to, in hopes that you all will pass this ordinance, and my only disappointment with it, Rob, before I express my disappointment, let me express my appreciation to the research that Mr. Smith has done and the diligence that the Development Committee has shown in exploring aspects of this, I suppose it's called an industry. But in any event, I certainly appreciate their efforts in this regard. My only disappointment at this point is that existing businesses, I believe Mr. Smith said there were 13 in Cedar Rapids, would be grandparented in, and my hope is that at some point, we could amend the ordinance, or perhaps it could be amended even now to say that these establishments are given a period of three years to relocate to an appropriate, appropriately designated jurisdiction. But failing that, I would urge your support of this proposal.
Thank you, Rob. Would anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, that closes out the public comments section of public hearing number nine, counsel. Let the record indicate that a public hearing was held on this matter and there were zero objections. That brings us any council of comments or consideration? Councilman Swor.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Flitsch, this probably is more appropriate a question for yourself. I haven't heard the term grandparenting, but in the grandfathering of those existing stores, is by law, do we have to do that?
I wouldn't say you have to, but there could be consequences if you made an existing business that's legal today, illegal tomorrow, in terms of expectations those businesses might have in terms of investments in their current location and so forth.
So really, probably not a good idea to pursue putting together something that I would totally support as Robin suggested. If there was some way of saying, you got three years to figure out how to get into a location that meets our new ordinance, I'd sure be supportive of that, but...
I mean, that's council's prerogative to, you know, say that's the policy that it's interested in, and staff can work on that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Swor. Next, we have Councilman Carr, followed by Councilwoman Vernon.
You know, you know what the real problem is? We can punish the business. The business is here because we failed to do the right thing to even have this happen in America. What's going on in America that somebody can go into business and loan money and get 400% interest? What are we doing with jobs? What are we doing with giving people quality of life and a decent salary to pay for their jobs? We're making some serious mistakes in this country as Americans to even, for this even to happen. We've got to allow it, it's free enterprise, but the fact that free enterprise is happening in this way, we're failing the public. We're failing the citizens of America, that they have to be put in this position to go borrow this money to do this. When I was in Vietnam, we used to have a deal where we'd loan $10 to a guy to go out to get some money, and he had to come back and pay us $1,250. Well, that was illegal in the armed forces, and we had to do it secret behind doors. I kind of laugh about this, but here I am now, 47 years later out of Vietnam, and it's legal in my city, and we have people. You know what these people are, have to borrow this money? They have to be single parents with children or tied up and need to get their rent. They've got to be people who are elderly, on fixed incomes, who haven't got their social security check and have to do this to pay their rent or their bills. It's sad in our country today that we even have to deal with this. It just makes me kind of sick in my stomach, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Vernon.
Hey, I have three things. One is, we brought this to Development Committee, it was kind of interesting. Staff was looking at it at the same time that some of us were talking about it. I had a young man who used to work for me who went into one of these loans, and it was the craziest thing ever to get him out. And I ended up helping him through the company, and then he paid me back in the small business over time, but I've had a lot of concerns about him ever since. What a nice young man, but he dug himself a hole, and it didn't take very long. So, you know, I agree with you, Don, and others who've spoken, that this is not a good thing for our community. I would like us to look into the grandparenting deal, but I think I'd like to see us pass this now, and that can always be an amendment. I would also, because these kinds of things are controlled at the state level, so we're doing this kind of stuff at the city level, you know, maybe just, and this is something for our legislative list for next year, that we ought to urge our state house to take on. Thank you. I move approval.
It's been moved by Vern, seconded by Poe. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That brings us to public hearing number 10. This is a public hearing will be held to consider amending chapter 32 of the municipal code. This is a zoning ordinance to create a new category of off-premise directional signs to define all other off-premise signs as off-premise billboard signs, to establish a new height and size requirement for billboards, and to establish a cap on the number of billboard signs in the community.
Thank you, mayor. Seth Gerson with Community Development and County Body of Building Services. This is a public hearing to, as you noted, to consider amending chapter 32 regarding billboard signs and off-premise signs in general. A little bit of background on this, last fall, staff was asked to research a number of sign issues, including the number of billboards in the community. Based on a recommendation from the Development Committee last November, we went to the City Planning Commission with an ordinance which would require more signs to be a conditional use. The City Planning Commission recommended instead that city council consider adopting a moratorium while staff continues to study the issue further. City Council adopted that moratorium on February 1st. The 180-day moratorium will go until July 31st. Since then, staff has been working to research other communities to come up with options for Development Committee and City Council on questions they have about billboard signs in the community. On April 30th, the Development Committee recommended ordinance that we're presenting today, and it was recommended for approval by the City Planning Commission on May 15th. Just before I move on to this ordinance specifically, I want to talk a little bit about where we're at with the signed moratorium. Today, we're going to talk about billboard signs. It's a public hearing and potential first reading of the ordinance. June 11th, if adopted by council, would be the second and potentially the third reading of the ordinance. The ordinance presented today does not cover digital signs, which rules the other aspect of the moratorium the council put in place on February 1st, including digital billboard signs, which are not covered by the ordinance today. Staff received a recommendation last week from the Development Committee to move forward with the ordinance for that, and doubt that the City Planning Commission on June 6th, and staff will be putting in a motion setting a public hearing for June 25th on the digital aspect of the moratorium. As for the moratorium itself, staff also received a recommendation recently to put a resolution, which we will see on June 11th, which would modify the...